I'd like to call the special call meeting of the Milton City Council from Monday, September 12, 2016 to order. I'm going to say to the clerk, please call roll and make general announcements, but I guess technically if we just call roll. It would be all right, Ken?
It will be.
Okay, Carter, you want to call roll?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll be happy to call roll for the September 12, 2016 special call meeting. I'd like to remind, wait a minute. Okay, I would like to remind those in attendance to please silence all cell phones at this time. Additionally, those attending the meeting who would like to provide public comment during the call for public comment, you're required to complete a public comment card prior to speaking on an item. Those called to speak will be taken in the order that the speaker cards were received by the city clerk's staff prior to the beginning of tonight's meeting. All speakers will identify themselves by name, address, and organization if applicable. As I call roll, please confirm your attendance. Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Here.
Councilwoman Karen Thurman.
Here.
Councilmember Matt Coons.
He's not here.
Not here. Councilmember Bill Lusk.
Here.
Councilmember Bert Hewitt.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Longoria is absent.
Not here.
Councilmember Rick Morick.
Here.
Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everybody. We appreciate you being here for this special call meeting. First item is our agenda. Do I have a motion to accept the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Councilmember Morick, second by Councilmember Hewitt. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimous. Do we have any public comment? Does anybody?
No, sir, I don't.
On this, okay. All right, so we'll move on to the public hearing. Carter, if you'll please call the first item of the public hearing.
Public comment, no public comments, sorry. Public hearing. Consideration of a resolution of the City of Milton, Georgia extending until December 6, 2016, an existing moratorium barring the acceptance of applications for conceptual plan approval for subdivisions located on property adjacent to Georgia Highway 9 between the Forsyth County line and the city limits of the City of Alpharetta, excluding property located in the five-acre road zone, Agenda Item Number 16-203.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you. This agenda item is a proposed resolution that would extend a moratorium that was put in place on a time-sensitive emergency basis on August 15 of 2016 that would bar, at that point, bar for 30 days the acceptance of applications for concept plans for subdivision on property adjacent to Highway 9 between the Forsyth County line and the city limits of the City of Alpharetta, excluding property located in the five-acre road zone. That was done on an emergency basis as the law allows. And as you have heard me say before, that for us to extend that moratorium for more than 30 days, we need to do so pursuant to the zoning procedures law. We have now run a legal advertisement, and here is the public hearing. That at the conclusion of the public hearing, if the council is inclined, you may adopt this resolution, which will extend this moratorium on the acceptance of concept plans until December 6 of 2016. The stated reason with respect to this moratorium is for the council and the community development department to consider changes to the overall development plan along Georgia Highway 9. This moratorium will allow us to maintain the status quo while that is looked at and while the requisite documents are modified that will bring to bear both the departments, but more importantly, the council's vision with respect to Highway 9. Following the public hearing, Mr. Mayor, if in fact the council is inclined to adopt this resolution, what that will do is that will extend this moratorium until December 6. The moratorium will terminate at the earliest of December 6 of this year. Number two, approval by the city council of an additional moratorium following a public hearing or the adoption of an amendment to the zoning ordinance with respect to the development pattern along Highway 9. Mr. Mayor, that's my presentation.
Okay, is there any questions for Ken on this? Do we have any public comment cards on this?
No, sir, we don't.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Any other discussion on council? Then I'll move on to, let's see. Do we need to take a motion on this, Ken?
Mr. Mayor, you do. The public hearing has been closed, and so the next thing would be under unfinished business. It would be the option of the resolution.
Okay. All right, if we can move on to unfinished business, Carter.
Read the whole thing again, Ken?
They just sound the items, so yes.
Okay.
This is a consideration of a resolution of the City of Milton, Georgia extending until December 6, 2016, an existing moratorium barring the acceptance of applications for the conceptual plan approval for subdivisions located on property adjacent to Georgia Highway 9 between the Forsyth County line and the city limits of the City of Alpharetta, excluding property located in the five-acre road zone. This is Agenda Item Number 16-203.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Motion to accept Agenda Item or approve Agenda Item Number 16-203.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Morick for approval with a second from Councilmember Thurman. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Okay, do I have a motion that we adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Let's see what time it is here.
Seven minutes.
Seven minutes.
[inaudible]
Rick, I'm gonna go ahead and start. Okay, good evening again, everybody, and welcome to the September 12, 2016 regularly scheduled work session. Tonight, we have four items on our agenda. Public comment is allowed. That is germane to each agenda item. If you wish to speak, you are required to fill out a public comment card and submit it to our city clerk. Public comment will be allowed for a total of 10 minutes per agenda item and no more than two minutes per person. Public comment will be heard at the beginning of this item. Once the item is called, no other public cards will be accepted. So is there any public comment on item number one, Carter, or is there anybody wants to turn in a card?
No, sir, I don't have any cards.
Okay. All right, Kathy, or Carter, if you'd call the item.
Discussion of a revised process for subdivision plat review.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm here tonight to discuss with you proposed changes to our development review process. I also have Jimmy Sanders here and Peyton Jameson from the Planning Commission, as well as Robin, to answer any specific questions you may have. You should all have copies in front of you because although I have a PowerPoint, it would be hard to read, I think, without something in front of you. Oh. There we go. Okay, I'm going to start with the current process. And the current process is really an administrative process between the applicant and the staff as we work through the development review process. And it starts with an applicant submitting a preliminary plat. So here we have a piece of land, and an applicant wishes to subdivide it to ultimately develop it. So he comes in with a preliminary plat for us to review, and we do that, make comments, red lines. And then the red lines are corrected by the applicant, and he comes back with a plan that meets our approval. At which point, this is a new step, and this is a step that was approved last Wednesday night, if you remember, when we did the changes to the zoning districts as it related to the rural view shed. We installed in this process a public informational meeting. And so you see that in red. That's where that new meeting would be held in terms of, in terms of steps within the process. This public informational meeting will only be for major plats. Now, I should mention that this process that you see in front of you, this current process, is not only for major plats, but it's for minor plats. And as you know, a minor plat is three lots or less. Major is above three. And we also use this process for revisions, such as changing lines on a plat or changing addresses. So it's used for everything. So as I said, for major plats only, the staff is going to hold a public informational meeting after staff has given preliminary review and approval to the preliminary plat. After that, it then goes into the land disturbance permit stage in that a land disturbance permit is issued, and the developer then follows through on the construction. Now, we're just talking about land disturbances. We're not talking about actual vertical structures. We're just talking about roads, water and sewer lines, sidewalks, stormwater facilities, whatever. When the land disturbance has been completed, the applicant then comes back to us and submits a final plat, or an as-built, if you would, of actually what has transpired and been built on the land. That then is reviewed by staff, and then if the plat meets the zoning and subdivision regulations, it's approved, and I sign off on that, at which point then it will come to the council and be put on your agenda for your review and approval. Subsequent to that, it's signed by the applicant, it's recorded in Fulton County, and we get 20 copies back. So that, it's a very administrative-driven process. And you don't see it essentially until the end of the process, so to speak. And until we put the public information meeting in there, there's really no point in this process where the public is notified. So I'd like to propose some changes to this process. And if you move on to the next page, the highlights are such is that we've divided this into two types of process. One is dealing with major plats only, in that we have a preliminary plat process, a land disturbance permit, and the final plat. And then we also have an exemption for, and this will be done administratively, for those plats that are three or less lots, as well as for revisions to plats, such as moving lot lines, changing addresses, and combining lots. So let me show you what that would look like. In terms of, I'm dealing with the A part, the major plat process. I've got three parts to that. In terms of the preliminary review, again, the applicant will submit the preliminary plat, staff will review it and make changes and comments. The applicant then returns the revisions with the red lines to the city. The staff then approves the preliminary plat for submission to the Planning Commission. At this point, the staff is going to send out notices to all adjacent property owners. We would advertise, and we would install a sign. At that point, the preliminary plat would be sent to the Planning Commission. And the Planning Commission would review and approve the preliminary plat and hold a public hearing. If the Planning Commission decided to deny the application in front of it, this application would be sent to the city council for their review. I will tell you that this is a process that the City of Roswell uses, and so we've looked to them for this process. Once the preliminary plat is approved, then we move into the land disturbance permit process. The applicant submits the LDP for review, the LDP is approved, and then the infrastructure is begun and then eventually completed. And the third part, and again, we're just dealing with major plats, is the final review. So the land disturbance is completed, and the applicant now submits the final plat, or the as-built, if you will. And staff reviews and makes comments, the applicant returns the revisions with red lines to the city, the staff approves. I sign off in terms of the zoning, and then at this point, it comes to the city council for your approval, and then the mayor signs off on behalf of the council. The applicant then records the plat at the Superior Court, and the applicant returns the copies to the city. Now, at this point, this is when an applicant can get a building permit, with the exception of he can apply for a model home before this process is completed. But at this point, this is when the vertical construction starts. Now, in terms of the exemptions, which I mentioned earlier, we would propose that minor plats, three lots or less, and then those plats that have revisions on them, such as changing to the lot lines, address changes, et cetera, be administratively approved. There would be no final review and approval by the city council. It all would be handled administratively. Now, by way of example, let me show you what this would look like. Next week, we're bringing before you several plats for your review and approval. The ones in yellow are the ones that would come to you should we adopt this revised process. These are all plats that are more than a minor plat. The ones in white would be handled administratively. We would bring them to you for your information, but there would be no action expected from the city council because they would be administratively approved.
Kathy, can I ask you?
Yes.
So those in yellow would only come to the council if the Planning Commission took issue with them?
No, this is at the end. This is the final now. The preliminary is when, you may see them twice. You may see them at the preliminary point, and then at the final point.
And what would we, when we would see these, if they went through the Planning Commission and came to us at part three for the approval on the mayor's signs, what is, is that just for our information? Or is there action to be taken on this? Can we discuss them at that point? It seems like they're too far gone at that point to make any impact.
Right, and it's really, at the end, just as it is now, you're right. I mean, but they can't be recorded until the city council approves them, but they are as-built. They're a reflection of essentially what has been built. And of course, the staff would check them to make sure they were built according not only to the zoning, but to all the subdivision regs and the...
So it would be kind of like an alcohol beverage license at that point? If they met all the requirements, it's just that we really have no option other than to approve them?
That is my understanding, but maybe Ken would like to weigh in on that as well.
At that point, knowing that there may be a discussion previous in part two.
Right, right.
I agree.
Yeah.
Okay.
Kathy, on the exemption plats, do they not have to be recorded at the county?
Yes, they would, but they wouldn't need to come to the city council first before that recording. I believe that's right. Jimmy, is that?
Okay, Karen?
I'm assuming, along with just the information, we would actually have a map that shows us where these things are, because I mean...
Oh, sure, and next week, when this formally comes before you, there is a map and all the information that you normally look for. But I just did this as sort of an example in terms of how many would actually come to you if we went to a revised process of only looking at the major ones as opposed to the minor plats.
Now, would these be coming on the consent agenda, or would they actually be coming and us approving each of them individually? How would that be handled?
We have changed that to, we used to do consent agenda, and then you asked it to be put on as a regular item, and so we would certainly continue to follow that.
But would we be voting on each one of them individually?
Well, I'm sure we could split them out, right?
Yes.
If all of them were okay, or split them out.
Yeah, we would work out those procedures, certainly.
But we would actually have a chance to review. It would be like a new agenda item.
Yes, of course, yes, as we've been doing for the last couple of months.
And I just, Kathy, I want to thank you and your staff and Steve. You know, we did this because, you know, a lot of this stuff is by right for by right development, which people legally can do. But this process will put a little more transparency in it, so at least the public has an opportunity to see what's going on, offer input. The council has an opportunity to be aware of it and add input to. So again, just gives us some more transparency and better communication to the citizens of what's going on and what's up for getting building permits and being built. Because unlike a zoning where we'd have a hearing and all that, so again, thank you. Just, it's, the developers may not, it's added a step or two for them, but again, it will will make sure that everyone's aware of what's going on and have an opportunity to review it and give input, so.
Rick?
But this would also avoid the issue of, I guess, on any major plats, of things being recorded down at the county without the council actually reviewing.
That's correct. We have corrected that, so that the council must approve all major plats before they are recorded at the county.
And that would be before any building could actually start as far as individual...
Absolutely, yes. You need a recorded plat to build, and you can't get a recorded plat without the council approving.
Okay, thanks.
Anybody else? Karen?
Just one question. On the minor plats, how can we notify people that there is going to be a subdivision of property? I mean, you're moving a lot line a little bit or combining two lots, I mean, people probably won't be upset. But if you're actually making, taking three lots and making, you know, breaking one lot and making three out of it, how can we notify people so that they at least know that that's going on? Because it doesn't look like in the minor that we really see any of that.
I mean, when we write the text amendment, we would, if that's the council's preference, we could make it that the three, the minor plats would be included with the notice, if that's what you want to do.
I hate to slow things down a lot for minor plats, but at the same time, it would be nice so that at least you've got some kind of notification that these minor plats are being considered before they administratively are approved.
Perhaps we could just do a notification type of thing, you know, like in Atlanta. I think you put up a sign that says a building permit is going to be issued. You don't have necessarily a hearing on it, but at least people can check into it, take it upon themselves, and check into it and see what's going on.
That would be very easy for us to do.
Yeah, and I like that idea, because even if it's something minor, and to Karen's point, you know, don't want to, especially, it may be, it's probably a benefit if you're combining a lot or whatever for the community. So you don't want to hamper that for the applicant, but if we do communicate that, then at least neighbors can call in and check and see and be aware of what's going on.
Yeah, they ought to be able to pull it up on a website very easily.
Allevies some fears.
Right, right. That would be fine. We could easily do that.
No.
Kathy, on the major plats, since we've added a couple of steps in that whole process, have you run through all of these steps and kind of anticipated a process time? That somebody could anticipate to move this whole thing through the process?
We could do that. I anticipate adding a month for major plats in that it would have to go to the Planning Commission. And it really sort of depends when they submit and where it hits, so to speak. But there would be a review by the Planning Commission, which means monthly, so we would have to build that into the review process. The quid pro quo, in a sense, is that I've excluded the minor plats and made them an administrative review that doesn't require any outside review, just administrative. So the minor ones would get through faster, and the major ones would have to go through the Planning Commission monthly meeting.
But in going through these steps here, there are certain notification periods involved. Certainly notification go to Planning Commission, notification for a public informational meeting. Then again, going on the council agenda, too.
Yeah. Yeah.
You're adding some time constraints in this whole process.
My thought is to do, right now, we've built in a public information meeting. I would take that and substitute that, the planning commission review. Because the planning commission review is, can hold a public hearing. As opposed to the informational meeting, which is only an informational meeting. So, it would be my thought to substitute out that public, even though we've just created it, to substitute out that public information meeting for the planning commission's review. And that that's where the public would have the ability to weigh in, so to speak, through the public hearing process.
Good point.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions?
When would we see this come in front of us to ratify?
Oh, we were just talking about that. We will move it as quickly as we can, depending on whether or not we have to meet the zoning requirement. When we do a zoning text, you know, it takes longer than it does if it's just a regular. So, we hear what you're saying and we will check with the attorneys and see how we get...
So, it does fall under the zoning...
I'm not sure.
Okay.
I'm not sure. And so, we need to check that. But, what I'm hearing is you'd like it moved as expeditiously?
Let me ask that. You know, again, we're not voting on anything, but is there general direction by the council to move forward in this process?
Yes.
So, yeah, the majority can.
Okay. And we've also checked with the planning commission. I did want to say Peyton is in the audience, but we have, we reviewed this with him. And so...
You guys need some more media?
With this, if, with anything, I would love for us to put something in there that says that the applicants, once disposition is made, need to take their signs down. You know, they seem to linger on a little bit here and there, and it's ugly. And then, some people think there's a zoning coming up on something else. So, I would like to see whether it's, this is handled in this or something else, that there's a requirement for the signs to come down after disposition is made.
And then, we'll have to enforce, yeah, cut and forth and follow up.
May I mind if I ask a quick question?
Sure.
And I apologize, because I probably should have been asking this question before this meeting. The minor plats, is there a reason that we're not going to have them ratified by councils? I'm a little concerned about not having the minor plats coming through to be ratified before being recorded. And unless I'm misunderstanding how we're, how the process is going to go.
It's just the way I set it up, but certainly, we could have them come through at the same time. And if you notice what's coming through next week, that includes major and minor. And we can certainly include them all if that's something the council would...
Well, this is obviously up to the council. My concern, this is the result of several that have been, if we had these been going on every meeting, I don't think we'd have as many.
Right.
My concern with the minor plats and not having that come before you is, I kind of like the thought of having the extra set of eyes on some of these minor plats as they come across before they get recorded. It doesn't have to be. I understand we don't want to slow things down needlessly, but we've had a few minor plat situations come through recently that I think an extra set of, an extra set of eyes from some, from whether it be he or the planning commission, might be of assistance.
I would certainly support that if the council's okay with it.
What if the minor plats just were put on the consent agenda? Because if we ever had a question, they could easily be removed off the consent agenda and then we would just, you know...
I think that's a great idea.
At least it's on the, on the agenda. We address it. The public has notice of it. If it's cut and dried, it's on the consent agenda. If there's an issue...
Would that work?
Yeah, that's a great idea.
Okay. Bill?
So, if it's on the consent agenda, it's ratified at that time by council, then it goes and is recorded at the county.
That is correct.
Same process as a major.
Correct.
It's just on consent agenda versus its own...
So, we could pull it off like we've done on other...
But, the minor ones, when it goes to the planning commission and all that, they would just come straight to us?
Correct, correct.
Just so this flow chart complies with the other one, includes all of those steps.
I think we have a public comment on this item that maybe came in?
Yes, sir, I did. I got a public comment request from Laura Bentley.
Hi there, Laura Bentley, 2500 Bethany Church Road. I didn't have, I didn't get to see the presentation ahead of time, so I might be a little bit confused. But, it sounds like you're saying that the major plats, the process, the approval comes through. That sounded great. I think you picked up on the minor plats and what we've been looking at the past couple of work sessions. So, I would strongly recommend that you get another set of eyes on those minor plats because with the intense development that we have going on, sometimes neighbors catch things that community development doesn't catch or that y'all don't see. And I think that you have a force of people looking at things that would be very much beneficial to the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more public comment on this item, Carter?
No, sir, that's all I had.
And just to wrap this up, we are capturing both major and minor plats. All right, anything else on this item? And again, thank you for putting this together. I think it's a great step forward moving forward. I'm going to ask, on the next item, please, on the public comment, if there's anybody that wants to speak on the next item, to go ahead and turn in the public comment cards. Carter, do we have any public comment cards?
Mr. Mayor, I think that there may be an interest in scooting down to number four, chronologically speaking. And I think, in the work session, I think we could just do that if that's without objections.
I have some technical difficulties on the other side.
Okay.
I got you. Okay, no problem. I'll be glad to move to item number four. Is there any public comment? Does anybody in the audience want to speak on item number four? Do we have any comment?
I don't have any other comment cards, sir.
Okay, all right. Ken?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you. This item number four is the product of some direction the council gave me some weeks ago. We had a work session where we talked about exploring the notion of a fee reimbursement mechanism in the City of Milton Ethics Code. Right now, there really isn't an explicit fee reimbursement provision in the City of Milton's Ethics Code. And I think the direction I got from staff was, well, could you go out and take a look at some other jurisdictions and at least give us sort of a taste of what some other jurisdictions are doing? So, I did that. And I have, hopefully, you'll have it up there. You'll have, everybody has some lists from Dunwoody, right, to Douglasville. There's one from Forsyth, Henry County, Kennesaw, Liberty County, Morrow, Marietta, Madison, forgive me, I'm just reading here, Aconee County, Peachtree City, Washington, Georgia, et cetera. So, really, they range all over the place. Dunwoody basically has some language that says if there has been a wrongful use. And so, let me kind of set the stage what we're talking about. All of these, most of them, if you will, have the notion that there has been a complaint filed against an employee of a local government or an official of a local government. And in most situations, the expectation of these various ordinances is, is that the elected official, the appointed official, or the employee was exonerated during the ethics process. They were exonerated. Now, that could mean either a finding by an ethics board that there was no unethical conduct. It could mean some sort of a summary dismissal. As the council is aware, the City of Milton's Ethics Code, unlike or like others, contains some preliminary review by a tribunal to see whether or not there is even an allegation of unethical conduct that even needs to go to a hearing stage. And so, most of these ordinances that have this fee reimbursement mechanism anticipate that there has been some success by the employee or the official, the appointed elected official. Dunwoody is interesting in that it anticipates that if there has been what's called a wrongful use of the ethics ordinance, that is basically a complaining party that has used the ordinance in an improper way. And typically, that would be a finding by the tribunal that not only is there no merit to the ethics complaint, but we find the complaint to have been wholly frivolous, without authority, and candidly unsupported by anything in good faith. In that sort of a situation, Dunwoody anticipates, here's what it says. It says, "Individuals directing unfounded, frivolous, false, or politically motivated complaints may be subject to penalties, including, but not limited to, dismissal of the complaint, public reprimand, criminal prosecution for perjury, and/or payment of costs associated with the handling and processing of the complaint." So, obviously, very stiff, stern language. Not precisely sure how they would be able to go back against the complaining party in that situation. Obviously, if there have been submissions based upon, you know, perjurious submissions, that's a different matter altogether. But, of all the ones I looked at, I wasn't crazy about that one as much. Douglasville is interesting. Respondent attorney's fees, again, so just a taste of some of this language. For any complaint, the city shall pay reasonable attorney's fees not to exceed $5,000 for the representation and defense of a respondent city official. Interesting here is that they're not even requiring that you be successful. It almost appears that if there is a, there is a mechanism for the recovery of attorney's fees, even if the city official or city employee was not successful. Perhaps, again, I'm not terribly crazy about that either. I tend to want to see, and again, this is just me speaking as an attorney, not certainly the policymakers. But, I tend to like to see that if you're going to have fee shifting involving the city actually coming forward and paying fees, I think it would be preferable for the official or the employee to have been successful in the ethics matter. Forsyth County, disclosure, obviously, I represent Forsyth County, but this is just an example. Their mechanism says that in the event of a dismissal, whether that dismissal is in the form of either a dismissal on the merits or even a technical dismissal. The bottom line is, is if the county official or the county employee prevails, whether a technical dismissal or dismissal on the merits, there can be a recovery from the county of up to $10,000 in attorney's fees.
Did you write that one?
I did. I did write that one. And candidly, the amount of fee recovery in those situations has always been well, well, well underneath that. More in line with maybe $2,000 to $3,000, to the extent that has been used. Anyway, we could go, I could go on and on. Obviously, the council can certainly wade through these if they want to. But, of the ones that I have seen, and of course, I've outlined them here for you, I think, if you read all of them together and I was to kind of paint you a snapshot, I think the snapshot would be, is that you see multiple jurisdictions, that if, in fact, their city officials or city employees are, I think, successful is a typical common thread. If they are successful, they can make application to have their fees reimbursed. The highest fee cap that I saw as far as reimbursement was candidly back in the back, and it was Marietta's will go up to $15,000 of reimbursement. I've seen some that don't speak to a cap at all. So, obviously, that might anticipate that it could be almost an unlimited amount. Forsyth's was $10,000. I've seen some that have $5,000. So, the amount, candidly, would be something that would be within the sole province of the city as to whether it wants to put a cap on there or not. But, I guess the bottom line is, is I think what the council was interested in is just give us some examples. Is this done in other jurisdictions? It is. Do you have to have this in Milton? You don't. Can you? I believe you can. It's just, candidly, it's just a policy issue, you know? Milton has not, well, it has been a while since Milton has had an ethics complaint. I'm not going to speak about any current matters that may be ongoing, but I will tell you that it has been, I think you member Milton modified the code to have these ethics panels of out-of-jurisdiction attorneys. And so, that is kind of where we are right now. The formal ethics board has been dissolved some years ago, and so, now, we use a panel system. But, that's where we are, council members, Mr. Mayor, and whatever the board, or excuse me, the council wants to do is up to you.
Could you explain our current process if there were ethics?
Right. So, the current process is, is that, first of all, a complaint will come in the door by, let's just hypothetically say, a citizen alleging some allegation of unethical conduct by either an employee or a city official. The first requirement is that the clerk is supposed to do basically a review of the technical documents themselves to make sure that the complaint satisfies some of the, basically, the threshold requirements of having the right pieces of paper with the right certifications, the right notary seals, et cetera. The clerk is not making a determination on the merits of any kind. They're simply ensuring that the right pieces of paper have been submitted with the right statutory or ordinance-based language on it. Once that determination is made, the clerk will then issue the complaint to the elected official or appointed official or employee against who the complaint has been made. And that will then set in place an opportunity for that employee or that official to tender a response. Because obviously, at this point, the complaint is proceeding once all the paperwork is at least in order. At about the same time that the clerk provides that notice to the employee that is the subject of the complaint or the city official, the clerk will also set about to put together one of the panels, the notion being that these individuals, the attorneys, are already sort of in our database. We will randomly draw three of those panel members. And so, while the clerk is awaiting the elected official or employee to provide their written response back to the complaint, the panel will be sort of assembled. Then, as soon as the employee puts together their response and gets that in, then the pieces of paper, both the response and the initial complaint, go to the panel. And they will do what's called basically an initial threshold review. And that initial threshold review is to basically look at the merits. Now, this is different than what the clerk did when they looked at the pieces of paper. This is to look at the merits and see whether or not a facial, on its face, ethical complaint has been made at all. And once, and that's not a hearing. There's no, there's no both sides coming and arguing. That's just a meeting where they will come together, an open meeting, and they will discuss the allegations in the complaint and decide whether or not it satisfies the facial requirements of stating unethical conduct. If they decide that it does not, they will then issue a dismissal based upon the complaint not meeting the merits, the merit-based requirements of the code. If they decide that at least on its face, as alleged, if you will, that it satisfies the ethical requirements, they will then set up a hearing. And that hearing will, of course, afford both the complaining party and the elected official or the employee the requisite due process, put people under oath. They will then have a hearing, and then the ethics panel will rule. That's the way it works.
Anybody have any questions or comments? Rick?
So, I guess if we're looking at, right now, the way it's written, is there any, if the ethics board rules in favor of the employee or council member...
Right, exonerates them.
Yeah, then they do get legal fees. They don't get any legal fees then. Whether or not it's dismissed or it's their rule in favor, regardless, they get no...
That's correct.
Help with it.
That's correct. That's correct, council member.
Rick, did you have something?
So, it looks like it kind of varies across the board. Some places leave it so, even if you were found that you had an ethics complaint against an employee or a city, some of them reimburse even if found that there was, I guess I'm more inclined to go with what you had talked about, Ken, is if it was found in favor of the employee or the council member, then allowing some form of reimbursement.
Correct, right.
Or if it was dismissed before...
Dismissed, same thing.
Yeah.
I would, you know, bet you to say this is basically in an effort to keep frivolous allegations from harming employees and council members, I think. Thoughts, Ken?
It's, well, it is. And it's also the notion that it is an ordinary and anticipated cost of doing business of the government, that occasionally, these sorts of complaints get made. And certainly, they serve a purpose. I don't want to take away anything from that. They serve a purpose, and having an ethics ordinance is a very valuable tool, and it should be there. But, I think also that there are situations where allegations of unethical conduct get made that do not have merit. And candidly, your typical employee or appointed official or elected official has to lawyer up and has to expend money to do that. And when they are exonerated or dismissed, or it's found to be, even if it's found to be frivolous, you know, at that point, they could have expended $3,000 to $5,000 or more. And all they did was show up for work. All they did was try to do their job. And I think that's sort of the public policy behind it is just, you know, we want to help defray that cost as a cost of doing business, if that is in fact the situation you find yourself in.
So, there's no way for something that was to be...
So there's no way for something that was to be found frivolous, that one could, the city or whomever, if we decided to go far with this, could, could try to get reimbursed from the complaint maker?
Yeah.
Blindly, I mean, just boldly frivolous?
Okay, well, I, here, here's my experience with that. I have seen that discussed. Number one, I'm not, I mean, we adopt a code, and then if there is in fact a frivolous complaint, I'm not sure, I have never really got, got it comfortable in my mind, what is the mechanism then that we seek to go pursue a citizen? And again, that's not telling me, Councilor Hewitt, if you told me to go research the full out of that and come back with options on what would be our sort of legal cause of action, because, you know, the citizen's probably just not going to pony up to the clerk's office with a check and say, okay, you've got me.
Yeah.
Here's my check for the, the official's attorney's fees. We're probably going to have to pursue those fees. I could see that, number one, being expensive, and number two, being time-consuming, so that's, I think, where you kind of, that kind of rubs up against some difficulty in collection, collection. The other time that I saw that discussed, some citizens got up and basically argued to the entity that was considering it, that it would have a chilling effect on, on their willingness to come forward if that's the position. And I'm not suggesting that needs to be what drives you all, I'm just suggesting the last time I heard that discussed, there were some individuals that said, you know, that seems, that seems a pretty tough rule.
So when we, when we revamped the ethics code a few years ago, we added that initial tribunal, you know, going away from the board to the tribunal with that initial facial look at it, and that was, that was to try to kind of cut a little bit of potential cost out of it, was it not?
It was. That's, that's correct.
So, okay, so, so at that point, if it's frivolous and it was answered by the, by the respondent decently, it should, it should all come out in the wash at that point, not much funds.
That's correct. That's correct. That, that, that's the expectation, and in fact, I will tell you, in, in my experience with the panels has been, they have done a very good job of, of reviewing the facial complaints, determining whether or not they state a claim, because, you know, sometimes there can be a misunderstanding of what is truly unethical conduct versus what is conduct some folks just don't like. They are different, and I thought my experience with the panels has been they do a fairly good job of, of identifying the difference between the two.
So if an official or an employee is exonerated, and the city picks up the legal costs of it, and if the claim involved slander, the fact that the employee or the official was exonerated does not preclude the official or employee to seek a civil suit?
Of course not.
In a slander case.
That's correct. Yeah, that's, that's a, that's actually a great point. You know, whenever s, any individuals tender these pleadings, obviously, they're putting this stuff in writing and tendering it with the expectation of action, so if there was a dismissal, there could be a, an accompanying civil action by the official against the individual who made those allegations against them, yes. I want to bring, if I may, just because I want to make sure I'm thorough in my presentation, because you've had a couple of questions about this. Our current, and Councilor Hewitt, this kind of is, is to you, one of your questions, the city of Milton does have a wrongful use section of our ethics code. So we in fact have the notion that there is a wrong way to use our ethics code, and it basically says that if the ethics panel makes a finding by clear and convincing evidence, I'm just going to read it to you, if you don't mind, I don't like to read, but I'm going to. Upon a finding by the ethics panel that clear and convincing evidence, and by the way, clear and convincing is an intermediate standard under the law, there's preponderance, which is the typical standard in most civil claims, clear and convincing, and then there's beyond a reasonable doubt is the, the true criminal standard. So basically, your code sets a fairly high standard and says, if there is clear and convincing evidence of the wrongful use of the ethics process in Milton, the ethics panel may recommend to the mayor and his council that the city impose any combination of the following penalties and actions. So if there was a wrongful use, this would be a recommendation to you by the panels that you consider the following actions to take against a complainant, and that would be public reprimand, criminal prosecution, I hope you heard this earlier, because this was another ordinance, public reprimand, criminal prosecution for perjury, or payment of cost in attorney's fees. So Councilmember Hewitt, there's already provisions in our ethics code that if there is a finding by clear and convincing evidence that someone has fundamentally misused our ethics processes, there are recommendations that can be made by the panels to you to really try and go after those individuals.
And with the panel, if, on that facial review, would the panel discern if it's clear and convincing, or it just doesn't have any merit?
I gotta tell you, that, that's a great question. Here's what I think. I, my, my thought would be that at the initial review, they would not make such an onerous finding. My thought would be that if they're, if they look at a complaint that is so wholly deficient, I suspect what the panel will simply say is, this is not unethical, gone, and, and wouldn't make a finding of clear and convincing wrongful use. What I think this wrongful use is getting at is if they set up a hearing, attorneys come in, put people under oath, and the panel sitting there thinking, somebody has lied to us, because none of the evidence is coming in the way it was alleged to have come in, there has truly been a wrongful use. This is without foundation, nobody is testifying the way that the complaint made it look like, and we are offended by this. That's the sort of thing I expect. I, if it's, if it's shut down at just that initial review, I think they're just going to shut it down and move on.
Okay. Can you bring it up?
All right. Would you like me to bring you back, with, obviously, the city manager would like me to bring you back some modification to the ethics code that might take a look at this fee shifting?
I would, I would.
Yeah.
Okay. I think I have enough of a sense. I'll put together a draft.
And I think, you know, I don't know if that's, but, you know, looking at most of these, I think we could start with up to $5,000.
Understood. Thank you. Understood.
All right, are we ready to move back to item number two? Carter, do you want to call it, or should I say Stacy? I mean, Carter.
Let's see. Next item on the agenda is the discussion of recommended amendments to the fiscal year 2016 budget. Miss Stacy English.
I emailed you the FY16 budget amendments, and there's only three comments left now. We only have three. So, the chairman.
Good evening, mayor and council. All right, we're on. So, thank you for working with me on the, on the budget amendment, or just rearranging the agenda. This has been kind of a series of Murphy's laws happening tonight, where we, we printed the wrong budget documents and we all got it together now. I did send you electronically the FY16 amendments. You can look at that on your iPads if you want to, it's in your email inbox, or you can go and look through the three copies that I was able to distribute out to you. For FY2016, the budget amendments, as we always do every year, we kind of true up what we have received versus what we've spent, and the ending result for general fund is a net revenue of $349,213 after we do all the amendments. The revenue amendments that we have, just kind of highlighting some of the, the changes that we had to make, property taxes have been billed, well, will be billed, we've received the document, or we've received all the tax files, or we should be receiving them in the next day or so, and uploading those into our system. They, we anticipate higher than, higher than what we anticipated revenues, and $465,381. Motor vehicle tax and title avalorum tax are coming in a little lower than we anticipated by $71,700 and $240,000 respectively. Motor vehicle tax is being phased out, and this is the birthday tax, and that is being replaced by the title avalorum tax. The distribution between the cities, the county, and now MARTA has changed, because they added MARTA into the mix, and so that changed the, the amount that we have coming in every year. Local option sales tax is trending higher than we projected, so we anticipate it being $100,000 more than we projected, and land disturbance revenues are lower than we, we anticipated and has a decrease of $54,000. And those are just kind of general highlights of some of the revenue changes. Do you have any specific questions about any of the revenue changes that we are making in the document?
I'm sorry.
Okay. Well, I'll move on to the expenditures. Legal fees have come in a little higher than anticipated this year, and we are anticipating $85,000 budget amendment needed to cover all of the expenses for FY2016. Risk management is coming in higher than we anticipated, and that is, I think I talked this, talked with you about this, about local law, or the law enforcement liability that came in higher in general because of the, the environment that we are in. We also have more assets that they are accounting for that we had to add into the liability policy. So overall, we're asking for $25,019 increased in risk management. In the police department, the increases there are all covered by revenues. So the $6,800, $819 increase for overtime is being covered by revenues that we receive from Atlanta HIDA for the overtime spent for the HIDA officer, their officer that we have. The $6,025 in vehicle repairs and maintenance is being offset by insurance proceeds for an accident vehicle. And the patrol equipment is being increased by $3,791, and that is offset by the donation revenues that we receive from Milton First Responders Foundation. You'll see a same amount increased in the fire department for the bicycles. The decreases that we are anticipating this department is $20,000 in gasoline to cover the, we're transferring funds over to the capital projects fund to cover the cost of purchasing automated license plate reader. There's a $9,000 decrease in Motorola radios and a $26,000 decrease in intergovernmental funds for the, also transferring those funds over into the capital projects fund for the purchase of a police truck. In the fire department, is there any questions before I move on to the fire department? Okay. In the fire department, we're increasing the awards banquet rental by $889, and that is offset by revenues that we received for, or donations that we received for that banquet. And again, the $3791 for small equipment, patrol equipment, or small equipment for the bicycles, offset by donations from first responder foundations. In parks and recreation, we're moving money from the grounds repair and maintenance budget, $64,070, and moving it over into the capital projects fund to cover landscaping of the Thomas S. Bird Senior House. We're going to landscape that area. Any questions? Okay. In community development, we are increasing professional fees by $8,239. This is offset by impact fee revenues that we received, and that is to cover the cost of Ross Plus Associates on the impact fee study and the capital improvements elements of the, of the plan. In other financing uses, you'll see an increase of $119,070, and that is to transfer money from the departments that we talked about, from police and the grounds repair and maintenance accounts. We're moving that money over into the capital projects fund. In contingency, we are covering the cost of the legal fees and the cost of the risk management liability fees by, with contingency monies that we had set aside. So we're decreasing the contingency by $110,019. Okay. Moving on to confiscated assets fund, this is simply a true up of what we received so far in confiscated asset seized funds and what we've spent so far out of these funds. In capital projects fund, we are increasing the tree recompense fund by $94,000, and that is to account for revenues that we received so far from, for tree recompense. We're increasing the amount for insurance proceeds for parks and recreation, and that was to cover the cost of roof repairs that we had at the birdhouse. Increasing the HIDA stipend that we received, $6,000 for the, the money that we received, the stipend that we received for the HIDA officer, that they cover the vehicle cost. Transferring money in from the general fund, $119,000, we've talked about that. One is, $55,000 is for the police truck and the automated license plate reader, and the $64,000 is for the landscaping at, at Birdhouse. We're transferring $48,666 from the capital grant fund, and this was to cover, sorry, I'll get to it in just a second. It was to cover some costs, I believe, it was in the storage building and yard construction. We, there were, basically, there were some funds that we didn't need in the capital grant fund, and we're just moving it over into the capital projects fund to cover some of the, some of the department expenses. I'll go through that in just a minute. And then you'll see transfers coming in from the impact fee fund. These are fees that we anticipate receiving by the end of this fiscal year, and I can go through those individually, or we can talk about it whenever we get to the impact fee fund. So in the police department, we're increasing the vehicle replacement reserve by $41,000. A portion of that is coming from the general fund, and a portion of that is coming from the Atlanta HIDA stipend. We are increasing Atlanta, automated license plate readers by $20,000, increasing the police facility by $15,557, and that is an impact fee fund. We're increasing the live fire training facility by $50,000, and I believe this was to run the, the water for the hydrant to the property. I know that there were some, some issues about that right now, but that's what we are transferring into that budget, and that is covered by impact fees. In the storage building and yard construction, the $39,145 is coming from the capital grant Sidewalks, we're decreasing that by $424, and that is from, it was basically truing up some money, I believe, over in the capital grant fund. It was some, it was an invoice that was booked to the MARTA account that wasn't eligible for MARTA funds, and so we had to actually book it over into the capital projects fund. The Hopewell at Birmingham intersection improvements was increasing by $145,090. And trying to remember where that was coming from.
What's the detail on that item?
Carter, was that coming from?
Was that the water, water main?
The large majority of it was the water line, and then there was a portion of the reconstruction when we moved and started the roundabout early to get the lanes open. There was a little bit associated with that, and some landscaping improvements that we're looking at. It was coming from a variety of locations.
How's, how does that compare with our budget then on that project? Can we tell at this point in time? Are we?
It is, that would be in addition to the original contracted amount. In that original contracted amount, there was a bid alternate for the water line, and we executed only a portion of that bid alternate made up, I think a little over $100,000 of that change order.
Okay, and we're also increasing the intersection at Fremontville and Providence in Birmingham by $15,251, I believe that is impact fees. And then the tree recompense over in the capital, I mean, in the community development department is increasing by $94,000, and that is offset by the tree recompense funds that we received, collected so far this year. In the capital grant fund, we are increasing CDBG funds to offset the monies that we received, increased higher than we anticipated by $7,919. And LMIG funds is increasing by $80,076, and that is to account for the funds that we have received from LMIG. You'll see the offset in the expenditures for LMIG, it's in the pavement management account by $80,076. You'll see the offset for the CDBG funds that we received in the public works sidewalks account. And then I talked about the MARTA account, there was a one invoice that was booked that wasn't MARTA-eligible, so we had to increase that. And then the public works, State Route Nine at Bethany Bend, there's a decrease in that amount that we transferred over to the capital projects fund, and then you can see the transfer out to capital projects fund. that we transferred over to the Capital Projects Fund, and then you can see the transfer out to Capital Projects Fund. Impact fee fund, you'll see the impact fees that we received so far this year and what we anticipate receiving, and, and so you'll see the requested amendment for the revenues and the requested amendment for the expenditures. We're moving all of those funds, the admin fund excluded. The rest of those are being all moved out to the Capital Projects Fund to cover the capital projects. So the $26,522 is being transferred to the general fund for admin fees. You have any questions? This will come before you on next Monday, the 19th, for a public hearing and also for a vote. If you have any questions between now and then, please feel free to, to ask, or you can certainly ask during next week's meeting.
You know, from that, as always, you know, anything on the budget, now clear, clear about, feel free, staff is available, and Steve's offer, as well as Stacy, Carter, and whoever else to meet, if you've got some questions on that.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any public comment on the next item, Carter?
Uh, no, sir, I do not.
Okay.
You want to say on the next, so the next item, you can head, Carter? Go for it.
This is the discussion of recommended fiscal year 2017 budget.
Okay. Right now, I'm here just to answer questions. I mean, I can give you a general highlight of kind of what we've already covered. There's been some minor changes to the documents. I know, in particular, we did request an additional MNO initiative of $30,000 to help offset, or basically to help us with professional fees to help develop the policy for, I'll get to the wording in just a moment. Develop the guidelines and processes for the use of community septic systems. I believe we were given some specific guidance at the last council meeting, and we felt that we needed to seek outside help for this to make sure that we bring you a document that is usable and something that we'll be able to have in the future. And again, there's a 3% increase that, across market, marketing market adjustment for each of the department heads, or, sorry. I'll be able to calm down in just a moment. There's a 3% increase for market adjustments for all of the salaries in the city. The insurance is increasing by 15%. And if you read through the, the transmittal letter that I proposed here, we are, we have about $400,000 that we would like to withhold and come back to you at mid-year so we can talk about any additional increases that we would have to, to adjust the salaries to the market. I believe that last council meeting or the last work session that we had on the budget, we talked about adjusting not only the salaries but also the benefits that we receive. We have vacation and sick accruals that we've been looking at. We've, we've already gotten the insurance, the health insurance costs where we, they're competitive within the market. And we've looked at pension, I know that we had the defined contribution and defined benefit. We no longer have the defined benefit for new employees, but we've got the defined contribution in line with the market, and we are now looking at vacation and sick accruals. Did you hear, say anything about that? There you go. So, sure.
Excuse me, I noticed our liability insurance line items have gone up tremendously. And I guess we can get into the detail of that when we get together.
Sure, and as I mentioned, in the, the adjustment for 2016, you'll see the, the law enforcement liability has increased, and that's mainly because of the market, I mean, the, the environment that we're in with law enforcement. It, it's not that our law enforcement is more dangerous or anything, it's just the, the environment. And so, all across Georgia, it has increased through, for all the different municipalities that have insurance through GMEBS. The, the other liabilities have increased too because we have more properties to, to insure. Sure, did you have a question? Okay, you look like you were about to ask a question, and?
Well, go ahead, finish what you're saying.
And that's pretty much what it was, it was just we have more properties to insure. We, we also were increasing the general liability because we have city hall coming online, so that is a, is a, I can't believe, I can't remember how much it was, it was like seven to nine thousand dollar increase for general liability just for that building. Then we have Providence Park come on board, and so you'll, you'll just see, just overall, they're increases because we have more assets.
Right, right. So is the coverage on city halls, is that prorated?
Mm-hmm.
For, what, six months, I guess?
It is. Is, what was prorated, Sam? Yes, it is prorated, from March on. So, I'm here to answer questions, if you have any.
If there is any, Karen?
Mine's not a question, mine is just throwing something out that we have discussed in the past, but, you know, our, we're asking more and more of our boards and committees, and they spend a considerable amount of time. A lot of other jurisdictions at least provide some kind of minimal pay to those boards for meetings that they attend. It's not like it's a salary that they get it regardless, you know, whether or not it's 50 or 75 dollars per meeting that they attend with, you know, once a month, you know. I'd, I'd like us to consider doing that, because I really feel like it makes, these people spend a lot of time, it makes them take it a little more seriously. It is, it is a job, and it should be a job, and they ought to look at it as, as the fact that, you know, it is very important to the city, and I'd like us to consider, like I said, it doesn't have to be a lot, but it, at least pay them for their, a little bit for their time and expenses to actually spend what can be ours.
Absolutely.
For the city.
I, I would certainly support that, and again, it's really just, you know, whether it's 50 or 75 dollars, it's a token amount. But it is something that, you know, they're spending their gas and, you know, nothing else. Buys them a nice dinner or something with their spouse, you know, Karen's point. I don't know that that necessarily makes them consider more of a job, I think they all take it serious. But it's, you know, in my mind, just a, a token thank you, just again, for, for their time, so.
Sure, we can do a little research to figure out what other cities are offering their boards and committees, and we'll take a look at that and bring back something to you next Monday.
When I started on Fulton County's Board of Zoning Appeals, when we started off, we got $75 a meeting, and then Tom, Commissioner Tom Low came before us, and suddenly we got a raise to $150 a meeting after that, but, you know. In that situation, it could take an hour and a half to get down to the meeting and an hour and a half to get back, just in travel time, going all the way down to Fulton County. But yes, you know, it wasn't, it wasn't a lot, but it was, you did feel a little bit appreciated when that check came.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I'll, we'll definitely take that and, and bring you back as a recommendation next week. Through the budget document, I tried to tie all of the new requests in to the strategic plan. And so you'll see that each of the goals have been identified, and any of the initiatives or capital project requests are, fall underneath those goals, that can nest underneath them, so. If you have any specific questions about any of the initiatives, I'll maybe be able to ask, answer any of them. I know we have all the department heads here tonight, and they'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have. And again, the offer always stands, if you have anything between now and next Monday, if you, if you need to ask any questions, feel free to give me a call or email, accessible either way.
Okay. Karen?
Okay. Okay.
You have one more thing?
Yes, I have one more thing. So we have a new communications manager, her name is Shannon Ferguson, and she is sitting on the front row. She comes to us from Colvinson Institute, she was the communications director there. So she also did the communications for Colvinson, as well as she worked on some projects with municipalities to help them with marketing and branding and things like that. And she teaches classes on the subject, so we're very happy to have her on board. Looking forward to working with her, putting her to work. I know, when I was introducing her around city hall today, a lot of people were saying, we've been waiting for you to come on board, we have a whole list of things for you to do. So I think that she's definitely hit the ground running today, she's kind of hopefully going to come back tomorrow. But I think she's, she will be a great asset to the city and a good fit for our team.
It's like there's some element of doubt?
That she's going to come back? Absolutely not, I think that her showing up here tonight is, is a good indicator that she'll be back tomorrow, so. We have her runner off.
And again, as I said earlier, you know, just welcome you to the City of Milton, and we're here to support you and just look forward to working together. Okay, is there anything else?
That's all we got, Mayor.
It's a little early, so. All right, I'll, we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Some, a second.
I think we'll adjourn the meeting.